Thank you.
I'll get the date though.
Thank you.
He should be on his way.
Okay.
Hey guys.
Hey Commissioner.
Good afternoon Commissioners, this is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Well, good afternoon everyone, thank you so much for joining us today. We will begin our business meeting with our invocation and today we'll do that as a moment of silence if you'll join me. Thank you very much. So it is just past 1:30, I will call this meeting to order, it's our Tuesday, June 27th business meeting, if you'll all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of today's agenda?
We do, the county attorney's office reviewed all items on the agenda and the board has appropriate jurisdiction of all of them.
Thank you Mr. Garcia. And do any Commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda?
I have none, thank you.
No sir.
And I have none either. With that, we'll move on to item two ceremonies and proclamations and item two A is a resolution proclaiming July 2023 as Park and Recreation Month. We have Nick Giacchi from Parks as the Parks District Supervisor presenting for staff. Nick?
Good afternoon Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present this resolution to proclaim July 2023 as Park and Recreation Month. Since 1985, people in the United States have celebrated Parks and Recreation Month in July to promote building stronger communities through the power of parks and recreation. In the 2023 Douglas County Opinion Poll, 92% of residents responded that they were satisfied with parks and trails and additionally, the parks' open space and historic preservation sales use tax passed with an 87% vote to renew. These numbers indicate our community is passionate about parks and recreation. Today, we have members of the Parks Advisory Board joining us and if the Commissioners would like, they can read the resolution.
That would be great, thank you Nick.
Okay, with us today is Jared Taylor, Steve Atkinson, and Karen Hickman.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing us to do this resolution with you guys today. This came out of Karen Hickman, I gotta give her a lot of the credit for this, so would you like to say a few words Karen before we read it or?
I just wanted to indicate that the theme for this year's Park and Recreation Month is where community grows and Douglas County is a community of communities that are, have been growing at a very fast pace and it's the dedicated professionals of staff and the maintenance crew of Parks and Rec that help to maintain our parks for our constituents.
Steve, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing in addition.
Okay, and with that, I guess I'll go ahead and read the resolution.
Please.
Whereas, Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Douglas County, Colorado, and whereas, Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks, and whereas, Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's, and whereas, Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas, Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education, and whereas, park and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas, Parks and Recreation increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased terrorism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas, Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas, Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change, and whereas, our parks and natural recreation area ensures the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas, the US House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas, Douglas County, Colorado recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners for the County of Douglas, State of Colorado hereby proclaim that July 23rd shall be, or July 2023 shall be commemorated as Parks and Recreation Month.
Jared, thank you and thanks to the Parks Board, any questions or comments from our Board of County Commissioners?
So I would like to thank you all for being here, I've shown up at many of your Parks Advisory Meetings and what I appreciate is the broad discussion that you bring to each topic, wanting to really explore it well on behalf of our residents. Karen, you email me all the time with lots of great questions, you are one smart cookie. You know, Steve, you always are there, Jared, you're a great chair, and I see Reverend Ziegler snuck in the back door, Larry is often at the meetings as well, so I'd like to thank all of you for being great advisors to the Commissioners and now that this sales tax passed and we are creating new guidelines for you to evaluate projects, we are going to be depending on you even more and again, I'd like to thank you and thank you for bringing this resolution forward.
Thank you Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Teal?
I too would like to thank you guys for coming in today and bringing this resolution forward because, I mean, many people view government as being very monolithic and, you know, it's elected officials, it's bureaucrats, they're making all the decisions. Well, you know, here in Douglas County, we have our citizens' boards, which you guys, you know, sit on and we throw problems at you, we throw issues at you, we ask you, what is the priority and we don't just do that just to give you guys a free dinner, you know, a sandwich occasionally, but it is to make sure that, you know, in all facets, we are a government of the people, for the people, and by the people and guys, you take part in that, we really rely on you to, you know, make sure that we're not living in the ivory tower and, you know, relying on staff and relying on professional ideas, but we're actually relying on what the people have to say and that's to you guys, talking to your neighbors, making sure that you're soliciting, well, what do the people really want to do? Because, the point is to remain the government of the people, for the people, and by the people, so we're counting on you, keep up the good work, thanks again for bringing this in, it's a, it's an excellent thing to commemorate.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Teal, wow, where community grows, I can't think of a better quote to really represent what you all do on the Parks Board and my colleagues are correct, the volunteer time that you put into making Douglas County beautiful from a parks standpoint is really significant. We know that in our county, about 50% of it is open space and it greatly contributes to the health and well-being of our community, but Commissioner Thomas is correct, after we passed this ballot measure, the citizens passed the ballot measure, there's about $330 million over the next 15 years for parks, open space, and historic resources and that's because the citizens want that and they want us to protect it, but we can't do it without your thoughtfulness and your recommendations. You know, I remember raising my kids in Highlands Ranch and really every weekend going to Highlands Heritage Park and it just was not only perfectly maintained, but a place for families to gather and that's a legacy that I know you all are very proud of and will continue forward as we think about more significant parks opportunities in the future, so thank you very much, appreciate you. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment, is there any citizen comment with regard to this item two A? Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you and with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming July 2023 as Park and Recreation Month.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor, any further discussion?
You know, if I could just quickly add, we've got a lot of staff here from our Parks Department, Steve Schultz, Amy is back there, I don't know who I'm missing, but none of this would be possible without the really great leadership of our staff, so thank you Nick, again, thank you, you helped me do a video, you look much different dressed up, you clean up pretty good compared to being in shorts, so thank you for being here.
Well said, any further discussion? Okay, seeing then, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And as a point of personal privilege, before we move on to item three, our consent agenda, we do have a very important guest in our gallery and not really a guest at all because we had the opportunity to celebrate her 20 years of service to Douglas County, which is no small feat, although we do have a lot of longevity here, she was so humble, we just had a very small recognition ceremony upstairs, but because she is here, I would be remiss if I didn't extend this opportunity to say thank you to the wonderful Ms. Wendy Holmes, our Director of Communications and Public Affairs, how about a round of applause for Wendy? So with that, we'll move on to item three, which is our consent agenda and I'll just ask if there's any citizen comment with regard to any item on our consent agenda. Troy, do we have any comment online?
Again sir, I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you Troy, and with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
If please the board, I do have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through double A on the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a first and second on the floor, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. So with that, we will move on to our regular agenda and our first item is item four A, it's a resolution making an appointment to the Veterans Services Office for Douglas County, Chris Mays, the manager of Veterans Services Office, presenting for staff, hi Chris.
Commissioner, excuse me Commissioners Barbara Drake for staff, just to give very quick background on this, so this appointment is tied to the ARPA funding that you all approved for Veterans Mental Health Services in our county over the next several years and so Chris is here to tell you about Mr. Weston, who is the individual we'd like to appoint for this, this is a volunteer position with a stipend associated and this individual has mental health background and will serve as a resource for our Veterans Office as well as a liaison to our contract with All Health Network, so I just wanted to give you that background and turn it over to Chris.
Thank you Barbara.
Good afternoon everyone, essentially Gary Weston is a Marine Corps veteran, background in the medical field in the Marine Corps, served during the Vietnam War and has combat within the Vietnam War, his background has been mainly in the medical and health industry. Gary is retired, so when we were looking for this position, we threw out a huge net out there and we must have spoken to, if I give you a number, maybe 30 candidates and as you all know, within our county for the position we're looking for, we essentially need that person that is willing to give up their own time for when we need it and with this position, we needed a subject matter expert that was gonna come in and essentially guide everything and navigate everything within the office related to mental health and with Gary, he has come in the last couple of weeks and has just taken on, doing an amazing job, we've spoken with All Health Network and we are planning on having a time where once a month, we have All Health Network essentially work out of the office, so here within the next month, two months, we're gonna see Gary and All Health Network take off to a different level, helping our veterans within the community. So with that being said, any questions from anyone?
Thank you Chris for that presentation, any questions for Chris?
Chris, I'd like to thank you for the work you do, I had a veteran reach out to me a couple of months ago frustrated, they couldn't get an appointment with the VA and so I gave them your name and number and they texted me that they had scheduled an appointment with you the next week and the next week, they emailed me, texted me and said you solved their problem, so thank you for being a great representative for the citizens, the veterans in this county who need your help, our help, help getting on their feet, so I appreciate you, I wanted you to know that.
Great, thank you, we have a great team, these guys and gals in there, they are helping tons of veterans, I was telling Doug, our office is completely full, the phones are ringing off the hook on Mondays and Tuesdays, great sign and a lot of great things coming, so thank you all for your support and assistance.
Thank you for that Chris, any additional comment?
No questions, I'll have comments following the motion.
Okay. You know, I would all say, Chris and really to staff as well, staff did a phenomenal job of identifying populations that are at the highest risk of suicidality and no doubt, working with the veterans community to make sure that those who have served are protected is really significant to us, so thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you on this position.
Perfect.
Okay, if there's no additional comment from the board, I'll open it up for any citizen comment, is there any citizen comment? Troy, any citizen comment online?
No online comment sir.
Okay, with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
I have a motion to approve a resolution making an appointment to the Veterans Services Office for Douglas County.
Well done Sergeant Major, you know, Abe, you always like to say when we see a former county commissioner before us, that once a county commissioner, you always get to keep that title of Commissioner, I believe that's the same thing Sergeant Major in the United States Army at the very least, so well done on this one and well done Barbara for figuring out this unique way to apply the ARPA funds. When we were in Washington DC several months ago for NACO, for the National Association of Counties, I shocked many people in the Veterans Steering Committee by mentioning, not the great amount that we were going to be able to divert from our ARPA funds into veteran mental health, but just even the fact that we were able to spend a penny on it shocked many in that room and these are folks who focus on veterans' issues probably just as much as Chris does here for us and so I got to tell our story several times that day, how we place this focus on our veterans, we have, we value our veterans and we were willing to do the extra work to find this unique application of our ARPA funds that came in, so well done Sergeant Major, well done Barbara, well done team, I second the motion.
Thank you for that, second Commissioner Teal, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to our next item on the regular agenda, which is item B, an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Castle Rock regarding the county's financial contribution for the Crystal Valley Interchange Project and the West I-25 Frontage Road Relocation Project, Douglas County Project Number CI 2022-023, Art Griffith presenting for staff, hi Art.
Thank you very much Art Griffith for engineering, it's really a joy to be here today, I started working on this project in 2002 and Dan Saylor, Public Works Director from Public Works and Aaron Monks, the project manager for the project, been grateful working with them to carry this project to where it is today after a lot of efforts, I know it's been on the town's radar since the late 1980s, might as well be 1880s, but 1980s, so we're kind of in a position, we're about to bring this project to fruition, essentially it involves four major construction phases, two for the interchange, kind of a package one, which focuses on constructing the east side first, little environmental hiccups with the new EPA Sackett ruling has kind of thrown a little twist, we're hopeful to start in July of this year on that east side package, but we're waiting some guidance from the EPA to break forward with that ruling related to wetlands and other endangered species type things, mostly along the gulch. The next package for the interchange is to construct the major part, package two, which is over I-25 and the railroad and then the other components of the project involve constructing the relocated West Frontage Road in two phases, one of which the county's responsible for, which is the Southern Inn in unincorporated Douglas County from Toma up about a mile to the southern limits of the town and then the town also plans to start the construction on their segment of the relocated Frontage Road this summer as well. Total construction costs are about $94 million, total project costs are around $125 million. As part of this IGA, we'll be transferring properties that the county acquired in the early 2000s that were needed for the interchange, when we were rolling in the early 2000s to the town who's managing the project, as well as a financial contribution of $24 million towards the package two, which is the major part of the interchange that connects the ramps to I-25 as well as builds over I-25 and connects over the railroad. That project is estimated to be about $70 to $73 million when you add in construction management and testing and flagging for the railroad and other parts that are eligible for the contribution. Our segment of the relocated Frontage Road ranges between eight and $10 million, depending on which way bids tend, they seem to be going down in our favor recently, I think that's because some of the other construction in the private sector has slowed down, so that might be in our favor. That kind of highlights the main aspect of this IGA to advance construction of the Crystal Valley Interchange, any comments or questions for me or the Town of Castle Rock staff?
Thank you Art, any questions for staff?
Thank you Art, I know you've been working on this forever, I remember in the late 1980s when Dawson Ridge was first talked about and this overpass was talked about, seems like an eon ago and here we are, so thank you for your ongoing work. I think in one of our work sessions, I asked you, if we approve the $24 million today, it will bring a total of $40 million that Douglas County has put into this project so far, is that still correct?
Yes, that's correct, that would include the construction coming up for the relocated Frontage Road, the money that we previously expended to advance, originally the county led the environmental and the early primling design in the early 2000s and we bought a significant amount of right of way. early on, at a much cheaper price.
Do I recall that it was $40 million to get this project done if it had been happened 20 years ago?
In that range, 35 to 40, 40 million to construct.
And of this $125 million that's needed for this package, how much is CDOT putting into it?
None, to my knowledge. I've got confirmation from representatives for the town. The developer is contributing around $50 million towards interchange, the current developer. And previously, the town received contributions from the developers on the east side. So everyone is partnering on this. The town has received about $5.4 million in federal funds through the design phase. And this project is slated for Dr. Cog Board to receive about $8.5 million through the Dr. Cog TIP program. Therefore, they'll take action in August on that.
And I just think it's important that this is over an interstate highway and that the town and the city, that the town and the county are doing the heavy lifting on this funding. That was my point in bringing this up. And it's a matter of teamwork, that Douglas County and Castle Rock work well together. And it's all about our residents. I think what really needs to be talked about, too, is the failing of the 181 interchange, that we've all gotten stuck in that traffic, trying to get through that interchange at the 181. And that's really, that's the important reason, to me, why this needs to be funded. So thank you for that, those answers to my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal, any comments or questions?
I have asked Art so many questions about this project over the years. I think I've run out of questions and I have none for him right at the moment.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Teal. So again, really wonderful project and a lot of time and effort, Art, you've put into this. For those that are not familiar with Dr. Cog and TIP cycles and some of the partnerships associated with projects of this size, can you walk through for us, you know, what it means to have $17 million from Fund 230, $7 million from Fund 235, and how that affects our other projects and priorities throughout the county from a timing perspective?
Absolutely. So next year's revenue projections in Fund 230, which is the four-tenths sales and use tax for transportation, voted on originally in '96 and extended in 2007 through December of 2030. So that's coming up. This $17 million represents almost two-thirds of the revenue that we will be receiving in that fund next year through projections. And then the $7 million comes out of Fund 235, which is the .18 sales tax that was voted on just a few years back to reallocate funding from the Justice Center to transportation. And I think there's a total of revenue anticipated around $19 million next year. So that's a significant portion of that as well.
Thanks for that. And then anything on timing in terms of, you know, I think when the general public sees a particular project getting a lot of funding, they're thinking, well, what about my area? Or what about, you know, this other part of the county? Maybe if you could help us understand a little bit more about the timing cycle that you walked through.
Well, this is about a two-and-a-half-year project anticipated to construct. And so it's very important for us, when we look at our resources available to address our capital improvement needs throughout the county, to balance how those fit in on an overall plan. So we developed a 2040 plan, which is our current long-range plan. And then into that, we create five-year priority projects. And so every year, that goes before the board and staff takes a look at prioritizing that and making adjustments. I mean, this project here, Crystal Valley Interchange, has been on there and off and money's gone in the five-year plan and then removed from it, you know? And so currently, it's always been a priority, but we had to look for the right opportunity to leverage our funds with the other funds to make these projects happen. So a lot of the projects that we do throughout the county is about leveraging our dollars to maximize them with partnership opportunities. And so that's one factor that always factors in. Some projects take several years because of right-of-way and utility relocates. You know, our US-85 project, we've been working five to six years with the utility companies to relocate utilities. And some of them are still in the way while we're under construction. Most of the utilities on this project are underway and out of the way. So that helps minimize risks during construction. Did that help answer the question?
I think it really does. And, you know, most may not be aware that really over half of our annual budget, which is right around $682 million at this point, is dedicated towards the transportation needs in this community because that's what citizens have asked us to focus on. So we know it's a lot of time and effort, but hopefully a significant benefit in a community where we're adding 24 people per day. Not we, government, but 24 people per day are coming because they like living here. So thank you for that. I don't have any additional questions unless the board has any. Okay. Let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item?
Here's Dan Seiler, Public Works Director. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Dan Seiler, the Director of Public Works for the Town of Castle Rock. First, Mayor Gray, Jason Gray wished he could have been here, as well as our Town Manager, Dave Corliss. They had other obligations with the CML Conference, but this is an important project to the town. It's our number-one transportation priority. And they wanted to be able to communicate that to you, but they wish they could have been here. As was mentioned, this has been a project that's been important to the county and the town for over 20 years. And it's even more so today. The need was there back in 2000 when I started working for the town. And with the continued growth and desirability of the Douglas County area and Castle Rock in particular, the need is even greater. And we're at a significant milestone with this project. We're moving into construction phase. So we're moving out of the 20 years of planning and actually at the doorstep of actually breaking ground. And we could not have done that without the partnership of Douglas County. So just want to thank you for the opportunity to consider this item today. Our Town Council did hear this a couple of weeks ago and unanimously recommended approval and did approve the IGA. And so with that, I'll keep it really short and sweet. Happy to answer any questions on behalf of the town. I do want to thank our staff, Aaron Monks, who's our project manager. He's been doing the day-to-day coordination and lifting to get us to this point. And along with Art and the other team members from around the county, we've gotten to this point. So again, just thank you for considering this today and happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much for that. And our best to Mayor Gray, to Town Council and all of Castle Rock for working well with us for so many years. Any questions for Town of Castle Rock?
I have none.
Dan has gotten slightly less questions over the years than Art has. So I think I'm good to go with questions for Dan.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, sir, for being with us. Any additional citizen comment? Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay. With that, I'll close citizen comment. Bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
So, Art, you didn't misspeak in terms of the 1880s that this interchange has been contemplated. Only at that time, that was the little settlement of Douglas that was there. That was the county seat. And there wasn't interchange contemplated at that location. But it was really just digging another road so that two wagons could pass. Not quite the same thing, not quite the same cost, but I'm told, or at least my research revealed, that didn't get funded up until this point either. That was a funny joke, guys. You can, okay, all right.
I would like to add to that, that, you know, on the west side, we have territorial road. And as part of our NEPA clearance, we did a full historic, you know, evaluation to make sure that we documented things and we weren't adversely impacting it and we could move forward. So we cleared the historic aspect of territorial roads.
Outstanding.
I didn't know about the interchange, but thanks for adding that.
Yeah, you know, you got to do deep research on some of that stuff. This is obviously, as Art did say very correctly, this is something that has been contemplated by the Town of Castle Rock for many years. And Commissioner, you actually hit it on the head. There was a time when Dawson's Ridge was going to be the next big neighborhood of Castle Rock back in the 80s. Market circumstances, the savings and loan scandal, I think played something into that. But it's good to see this project finally coming together. When we, my colleagues ask questions pertaining to the financial impact on the county partnering with the town. One thing I feel I do need to share with you guys, I did attend the Castle Rock Council meeting last week when they approved the IGA with us. And our questioning of Art on the financial impacts, guys, that was a fraction of the time that that council ran first the CEO, CFO of the town, and then Mr. Seiler through what were the financial impacts of the town. I assure you, the Town of Castle Rock is very dedicated to this project. There, the old phrase, "Put your money where your mouth is", they are. The lion's share of the impact fees for new home developments for the last three years that are segmented for transportation are going into this project. They are moving money around from other cash funds in the town in order to get this up and moving this summer. So Commissioner Thomas, when you talk about partnership being required to make projects like this happen, Castle Rock is absolutely stepping forward, absolutely engaging their partners. And of course, I do think it's appropriate that we partner with them. To everybody out there who's listening to these numbers and you're thinking, my goodness, this is a lot of money. You know, folks, that's what roads cost today. Earlier this year, we had to commit $100 million for the project at Santa Fe and C470. And that was with participation from CDOT. And yet, that was $100 million that the county put into that. We know that we live in the age of the three interchanges, the Crystal Valley Ranch interchanges, but the first. At some time, over the next 10 years, we are going to need to tackle the expansion of the interchange at Lincoln and I-25. And every estimate I see says that $120 million would be a bargain basement price, that we probably will not realize in that very needed improvement to that interchange. Of course, it came up in our discussions as a board earlier, you know, only a few weeks ago, actually, that, you know, well, don't we need to start looking at expanding I-25 more between Castle Rock and the Lincoln Avenue interchange? The answer to that lied, well, before we do that, we've got to expand the interchange at Happy Canyon. That's 1960s infrastructure that is aging out, must be replaced. And so even before we can make that important improvement in our transportation system here in the county, we must also address the Happy Canyon interchange, which we're already working in partnership with the good people in Castle Pines on. And so, and then, again, that'll start coming close to $100 million once we get to those total costs. So this, but this is what we do. This is what we do in Douglas County, you know? Commissioner Layden, you pointed out rightly the investment we make in transportation here in the county every single year. Every year that you've been on the board, these two years that I've been on the board, our people value the ability to get around and take advantage of the freedom of the open road, both for commerce, getting kids to school, getting to work in the morning, and just being able to live free. So it's with great pleasure and a real privilege. And if it pleased the board, I do have a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Town of Castle Rock regarding the county's financial contribution for the Crystal Valley Ranch Interchange Project and the West I-25 Frontage Road Relocation Project, Douglas County Project Number CI-2022-023.
And I'll second that. And just to clarify, is it Crystal Valley Ranch or Crystal Valley?
This Crystal Valley Interchange is the project.
Okay, thank you. I seconded that.
Maybe I live in Crystal Valley Ranch, so it's a Freudian slip. So I am happy to stand corrected on the motion.
So we have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Thank you, Art.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to Item 4C in our regular agenda, which is the 2023 Denver Regional Council of Governments Older Americans Act Contract EX-23031 in the amount of $782,158, with required match of $98,090 for a project total of $880,248. Allison Cutting, Community Services Supervisor, presenting for staff. Hi, Allison.
Good afternoon. And I'm giving the deer-in-the-headlight look.
Michael's on his way to help.
I know. We love our IT consultants. Yeah. How do I get it from there? Oh, it's the start button.
Thank you, Michael.
Michael. All right. Thank you. I apologize. So Allison Cutting, representing staff from Community Development. So Douglas County has been notified by the Denver Regional Council of Governments that the application for older adult services and assisted transportation has been recommended for funding and issued Contract Number EX-23031 for $782,158. A local match contribution of $98,090 is required for a project total of $880,248. This funding is for community-based services that help older adults remain independent, continue to live in, and continue to live in their own homes. This contract will also provide funding for assisted transportation and for services for Douglas County residents aged 60 and over from July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024. So in addition to our assisted transportation, older adult services include chore, personal care, homemaker, and reassurance calls. The county does not provide older adult and transit services directly. Instead, we sub-grantee agreements will be executed with local area partners to offer these services. And through partnerships with local area providers, Douglas County is able to leverage county match contributions of $42,105,000 in cash and $55,985 in kind match to provide that $880,248 total program support. These programs offer more than 25,000 units of services for our older residents. So in September of 2022, Douglas County opened a solicitation for agencies to submit proposals to offer these community-based services. The agencies you see listed here were selected to provide these services, which enhance mobility and support residents in improving their quality of life and allowing them to remain active members of our community. The request before you today is approval of the Dr. Cog Contract EX-23031 in the total amount of $880,248. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Allison, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Allison, can you tell us what a reassurance call is and who does that?
Yes. So reassurance calls were started actually during COVID. And it's when the providers, in this case, we have Castle Rock Senior Activity Center and Aging Resources of Douglas County, they actually call residents who sign up for the service on a regular basis just to check in, say hello, see if they need anything, if they need additional services. And it's really been helpful. The residents really enjoy it. And the volunteers from the community-based providers really enjoy doing it. And it does help with the social isolation that we've heard so much about. It's been a very valuable program.
Thank you, Allison. I think this is actually one of the most important services that the county puts together and offers to the residents. We know that senior citizens are the largest growing population in our county. And this allows residents to be able to stay in their homes and enjoy their homes still. allows residents to be able to stay in their homes and enjoy their homes still because people come in to help them, and it helps them financially into the future when they are forced to leave their home for other arrangements. So I would just like to thank you for the ongoing work you do in this field all the time, and I think you have a partner in crime named Carrie Erickson, who just has a huge heart and has done so much for our seniors in our community. So thank you for partnering with Carrie and the others and bringing this to us today.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
No questions for Allison. This is another one where I usually get a double dip because I get to deal with this on the Dr. Cog Board, and it's always nice to see our county listed there. So no questions for Allison.
Great, and I have no questions either. Great presentation. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item 4C? Troy, do we have any comment online?
I have no online comment.
Okay, and with that, I'll close citizen comment, bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
I have a motion to approve the 2023 Denver Regional Council of Governments Older Americans Act Contract EX-23031 in the amount of $782,158 with a required match of $89,090 for a project total of $880,248.
Commissioner, I'm just going to ask if you meant $98,090.
I did, $98,090. Thank you.
You're welcome. We have a first, is there a second?
This, again, this is something, as I mentioned earlier, I usually get a double dip on. We actually have a really good reputation in the region. On the, the Dr. Cog is the federal, what's called the AAA, the Area Agency on Aging for the Denver area. And so it's these allocations that we do get an opportunity to review and approve on the Dr. Cog Board for the last nine years that I've been a part of it. Again, we have a very good reputation in the region for how we treat our aging population, to the point that, you know, Commissioner Thomas, you mentioned Carrie Erickson, our own Carrie Erickson, actually, she has been selected to be the Chair of the Area Council on Aging, and in large part because of this great reputation. Allison, you do great work shuffling the bids that come in and then moving those on to requests up to Dr. Cog. This is well-spent money, as Commissioner Thomas alluded to, and for that reason, I am happy to second.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. So we have a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. So with that, we'll move on to item 4D in our regular agenda, which is Renaissance Festival Traffic Bear Dance Drive Road Closure. Zeke Lynch, Manager, Traffic Engineering and Traffic Operations, presenting for staff. Hi, Zeke.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Just get a few files open here. So I don't have a formal agenda or a formal presentation necessarily, but the agenda item before you today is a request for a resolution approving the temporary road closure of Bear Dance Drive just south of Toma Road. So really, this resolution, should it be approved, is to delegate your authority as a board to our Public Works Director to be able to close Bear Dance Road to mitigate potential traffic impacting the Sageport and Bear Dance neighborhoods from the Renaissance Festival. So, you know, as you know, they've entered their 46th year of successful event coordination here in the county. It's a beloved event by many families throughout the county, and since their most successful year last year, the county staff, as well as the Sheriff's Department, the event organizer and town staff have really been coordinating to try to implement some new traffic patterns, to widen their driveways, to hire additional parking staff, to implement a no parking zone along Perry Park Avenue, and among other things, to try to really mitigate the impacts of traffic to the adjacent neighborhoods. So it's been two weeks since they've been, you know, had their first opening weekend. They have six more weekends remaining, and since 2021, we've really been tracking the traffic volumes that are within these adjacent neighborhoods, and it's really the last two weekends of the festival that have the biggest impact to the neighborhoods, seeing traffic four or five times what you would ordinarily see during a typical weekend. And so that's why we're requesting this approval of this resolution, so that if the need arises, we could close Bear Dance Drive just south of Toma Road to really direct those, that traffic that would be going through the neighborhoods to the more appropriate routes and keep them on the major thoroughfares. So if it pleases the board, I'm happy to read that resolution and/or share some of the graphics that I brought to further communicate why we're making this request.
You know, I think for the purposes of expediency, I believe the board has reviewed the packet. If you want to provide the highlights from your presentation, that's probably fine, unless the board would like a reading of the resolution. Okay, go ahead, Zeke.
Yeah, certainly. So the, I think the highlights really are, you know, that we will staff said closure if it becomes necessary. The approval to move forward with said closure would lie with the Public Works Director. It would likely occur Saturdays and Sundays, the last two weekends of the festival, between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM, and those folks wanting to leave their neighborhood would be permitted to do so, northbound on Bear Dance towards Toma Road, but they would be prohibited from heading southbound into the festival, into Bear Dance towards the festival grounds. And we think that this would give us the ability to really mitigate some of those negative traffic effects like speeding, cut through, and the other things that we've heard from the residents within the area.
Okay, thank you, Zeke. Any questions for staff?
I do have a question for you, Zeke. So if I want to, if I've left to go to the grocery store first thing in the morning and I'm trying to get home, or I'm trying to get to the golf course, and I'm trying to go south on Bear Dance to go past there, how can I get to where I'm going?
So with our current proposal, the closure could be manned by a sheriff's officer, or it could be manned by a public works staff employee. I think what we're trying to avoid is we're trying to avoid stopping people, checking IDs, keeping a list of addresses of approved people to either enter or exit via the closure. So in the current proposal, folks would be required to go down Toma Road, down to Perry Park Drive, i.e. 105, and then down Perry Park Avenue back into their neighborhood. So we have heard such vocal concerns from this residence, these residents in this area, that I think the two-to-four hour closure that we may implement would be welcomed and wouldn't be a burden to them.
So if they were needing to take the detour to get back into their home, would that put them right through the middle of the traffic getting into the Renaissance Festival?
Yes, it would.
And so what we're saying is that this is the trade-off that we are going to provide to you, so we're going to close off your neighborhood because we've heard the complaints that you have made. And so in order to solve the problem and the complaints, we're going to shut off your neighborhood, which means for these two or so weekends, you need to plan your trips in particularly back into your resident during this timeframe, and they'll be notified about this?
That's right. We've already had some really good communication through our PIO's office. Caroline's posted some posting on Nextdoor with all of the mitigation strategies that we've already implemented, and at least the first two weeks of the festival this year, we think those have been very successful, namely, the event organizer committed to getting more parking staff on, hired, and helping get people expedited into the festival grounds. It's really those last two weekends where we jokingly said it was Free Turkey Leg Day, and the owner reminded us that only the parking is free.
Okay, Zeke, thank you for that information. My only concern, I mean, we all understand the problem of Renaissance Festival traffic, and I just thought, if I were one of these neighbors that's trying to get back into my residence, what are my options? And it sounds like education and planning are the most effective way to prohibit inconvenience.
That's right, and on those last two weekends, when the closure is not in place, our hope is that people will follow the GPS, will not follow the GPS, but rather stay on the thoroughfares. So that's the other complication here, is we have no control over Apple and Google third-party apps that will send people down, you know, neighborhood streets, but we've placed VMS signs, we've placed lots of no parking signs, really to try to direct people to those major thoroughfares. So it may not even become necessary for us to implement this closure. It's just giving us that authority to do so, so that we can be as responsive as we can when and if that time comes.
So Zeke, I appreciate your help and the teamwork that we saw demonstrated in trying to solve this problem. Hopefully, you've found the sweet spot for this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
My questions were addressed.
Zeke, thank you for your work on this. I know this is a really significant collaborative effort with a lot of different stakeholders, and, you know, we received correspondence from directors of the Renaissance Festival thanking the county and its partners for the great work in terms of the coordination. It sounds like so far, knock on wood, things have been running fairly smoothly. It sounds like a couple of outstanding issues are still occurring specifically with regard to traffic, and one was directional signage at Toma Road and Bear Dance Drive. Is that something that you're looking at as well?
It is, and, you know, I think there's some additional coordination that may need to happen with CDOT, because that's all the, that western frontage road in its current alignment is all CDOT right-of-way. So our variable message boards are actually posted closer to the Toma Road and Bear Dance intersection. So we're directing people further west on Toma down to 105, but perhaps there could be a need for a variable message sign to direct people that are already on the frontage road to get back onto I-25 and continue to the festival in that direction. So that's something we're looking into.
Okay, and just to quote Mr. Erickson, "It is good to recognize the improvements which owners and agencies have accomplished and what it means to a grateful community. Ongoing efforts may never really finish, but this start is a remarkable achievement." So good job. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item 4D? Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
Well, we never like to close roads that are normally open to the public, but it does seem like we've put in the legwork on this one, done the research. Again, we've alluded to the teamwork with the owner of the Renaissance Festival, as well as residents in the area, and then, of course, it's a delegation and giving it the Public Works Director the ability to make this closure if needed. So it sounds like we're doing the smart thing on this one. Obviously, there's something we can keep looking at once the season is over with and we contemplate next year, but if it pleases the board, I do have a motion to approve the Renaissance Festival Traffic Bear Dance Drive Road Closure.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Thanks, Zeke.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to our final item in our regular agenda, which is item 4E, a license agreement with Parker Water and Sanitation District for Ruder Hess Reservoir. Amy Knopf, Ruder Hess Reservoir Manager, presenting for staff, and Steve Schultz accompanying. Hi, guys.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Amy Knopf, representing the Department of Community Development. We are here to discuss the Ruder Hess Reservoir Recreation Lease Agreement with Parker Water and Sanitation District. The Ruder Hess Reservoir and surrounding property is owned and operated by Parker Water and Sanitation District for the primary purpose of providing drinking water to its customers. This license agreement enables the county to access and use the property for approved recreational purposes that are consistent with the federal permits, easements, and the Recreation Master Plan. It also authorizes the county to operate, maintain, program, collect fees, and conduct capital improvement projects for the approved recreation. The county will work closely with Parker Water and Sanitation District by communicating and coordinating the operation-maintenance programming of the approved recreation with Parker Water and Sanitation District to ensure recreation is compatible with its primary purpose of providing the drinking water. The maintenance plan within this license agreement identifies individual and shared areas of responsibility. Parker Water and Sanitation is solely responsible for the infrastructure to provide water and sanitation services to its customers and to manage the fishery for water quality. The county is solely responsible for recreational infrastructure, the roadway to the shoreline, and managing the fishery for game fishing. The shared maintenance includes maintenance, repair, and enhancements to the access road and the annual fishing assessment. In closing, this license agreement enables the county to offer and manage the approved recreation on Parker Water and Sanitation's Ruder Hess Reservoir and the surrounding properties. It also defines the maintenance responsibilities for each of us. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Amy, thank you for that presentation. Any questions for staff?
So Amy, I saw words up there about fish. Have they opened up the reservoir to fishing?
Not yet, ma'am. We are very close. We are working with Parker Water Sanitation and Aqua Sierra to get that open this calendar year.
Perfect. You know, we've had several meetings with Ron Red, and I appreciate your partnership with Steve Schultz, your boss, and everybody in the county that's worked together, all the other municipalities that have worked together, again, partnership is the key word here, to allow our residents to have this great opportunity. Can you tell me, I think there's 100 openings per day, how many of those are filling up so far?
Our busiest day, I believe we had 49 reservations and 86 people in attendance. We had a slow start because of the weather. This past weekend, we saw a very big spike.
Interesting. Thank you for your help and for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Teal?
No questions. Good, comprehensive presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Amy, and I'm referring to the agreement under Section 4, where it says, "The county shall have final decision-making authority regarding any recreational activity and improvement on the property to the extent that the same are consistent with the master plan provided and don't interfere with the primary purposes of Ruder Hess." So for the listening public that may be confused about how recreation is managed and timelines and what they can expect, how would you explain that provision?
Ruder Hess Reservoir is a very unique property. Parker Water and Sanitation had to work with the federal government to construct the dam. It required them to attain a Army Corps of Engineer permit, commonly known as the 404 permit, and do an environmental impact statement. With what they learned in those processes and those permits, they identified critical areas to protect and ways to do business. Those two documents helped inform the Recreation Master Plan that was developed in 2016 through the then Ruder Hess Recreation Authority. Collectively, those are our partners. They all worked together, had a lot of public input, and determined at that time what was acceptable, and that's how we've landed where we are.
Okay, thank you, Amy. So with that, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this item 4E? Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
And I have no online comment, sir.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close citizen comment, bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or motion.
I have a motion to approve a license agreement with Parker Water and Sanitation District for Ruder Hess Reservoir.
Second.
So there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll move on to item 5, which is citizen comments, organization comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than what is scheduled on today's regular agenda. This is an opportunity to share your This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. If you would, please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments, and you will have up to three minutes. Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments?
Thank you. Kathryn Michelson, Highlands Ranch. I'm coming here today to debunk a myth. It has been said that I come here in Laura Thomas's defense because we are best of friends. In fact, I didn't meet Laura until February 7th of 2023 at the Central Committee in Castle Rock, when she told me what was happening here in our commissioner's hearing room. Here were everyone, meaning you three, who are all supposedly Republicans. Many of us pointed out to you on March 14th that we desire Laura to be placed back as chairman and onto her committees. I have pointed out to you that Laura received many, many more votes than either of you in the last election. 121,000 Republicans voted in 2020. Laura received 128,000 votes, which means lots of independents as well voted for her. In essence, Teal Layden have disenfranchised our votes. Is this fair? Laura recently has spent her time doing a lot of town halls, speaking about tax hikes. Our government in Denver is trying to cram down our throats. Laura has spent 26 years of her life serving the public. Abe and George, I don't know what to do with you two. Your arrogance in trying to flatten or destroy Laura Thomas is palpable. I am here because of integrity, not influence. I am here because a travesty has been perpetuated on Laura Thomas, and you should not get away with this. Please, go to your own integrity, not looking for influence. I'd like to invite all of you to a tea party, not in Boston or Cambridge. By the way, Abe, did you honor us with the fellowship? There is a lovely teahouse in Highlands Ranch where I'd like to meet with you before July 14th, my treat. Let's talk and see if we can resolve this. You have my email, because I have emailed you before. Laura has my phone number. Let's unravel this like ladies and gentlemen. We're concentrating on integrity, not looking for influence. Our country is falling into an abyss. It's time the three of you came together, and I am sincere about this invitation to tea. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional citizen comment? Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll ask if there are any commissioner comments.
You know, after a weekend of pulling together as an entire county to help out the folks affected by their tornado in Highlands Ranch, and after a meeting where we were doing the people's work with unanimous votes, I mean, I guess it is good to get a contrary opinion. And, you know, again, we live in a free society. If there's no dissent, there's no choice, well, then there's no choice.
Thank you, Commissioner Teal. Commissioner Thomas?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I would echo my colleague's sentiments that doing the county's work is a high privilege, and couldn't be more pleased with our entire board, all three, and our staff, the good work of the Public Works Department, and really the partnership with Highlands Ranch Metro District and the HRCA to address, which fortunately was not a significant amount of damage, although a lot of property damage, no lives lost, no significant injuries that we're aware of. So high kudos to all those involved, and really a pleasure to see neighbor helping neighbor. And again, of the 400,000 people we represent, seeing folks come together to do the true work of the people is really a powerful testament to this county. So greatly appreciate that. I'll move on to Item 6. Is there any other business?
No other business.
Okay. And then for the county manager, anything from the county manager's report?
Nothing today.
Okay. We just did commissioner comments, unless there are any other commissioner comments today?
I did have some other comments.
Sure.
You know, I would just like to say that last Thursday afternoon at about 3:30, I was driving up Monarch, and it was hailing and raining so hard, I could barely see the highway. I was able to get to my house, get my car in the garage. I went upstairs, and I took a video of my trees going from side to side. And I had never experienced anything like that. And then my phone started blaring that there was a tornado going on in Highlands Ranch, and everybody needed to get into their basements. So I did that. I went into my basement. I stayed there for a few minutes. And then when the hail stopped banging so loudly that I could hear something else, I went back upstairs, and I saw that my fences were down, I had tree limbs all over the backyard, but I did not lose any trees. I went outside, and my next-door neighbor, his huge, beautiful, 23-year-old tree was laying against his front door. And within a half an hour, he and another neighbor were out with chainsaws, and they got that tree cut up and stacked in a truck and out of there in two hours. And I think that was the message of what we have seen in Highlands Ranch. Our staff came together immediately and opened up drop-off places for people who could drop off their limbs, not their limbs, their tree limbs. And there were a bunch of students from Latter Day Saints there over the weekend that I spoke with when I was up at Highlands Heritage Park. I went out and checked aside on Griggs. This is a piece of property that the county owns, but our road and bridge department went out there and with big equipment leveled it, brought in road base so people can drive on it. And starting yesterday, they were dropping off tree limbs, as well as fencing and root balls. So I just am so impressed with how our staff came together to provide opportunities for our citizens to take care of themselves. Also, the Highlands Ranch Metro District and the Highlands Ranch Community Association have pulled together so well that the three organizations are doing communications together so that our residents know where they can go and get good information. And, you know, I lived in Lyman for many years, listening to tornado sirens for practices. We don't need tornado sirens because we all have cell phones that will alert us much more quickly. So I'd like to thank everybody for coming together, and I'd like to thank God that we don't have any injuries, we didn't have any deaths, and I am aware of any structures that we lost. We have some structural damage, but this is absolutely amazing what Douglas County survived. And this is going to make us stronger going forward. And finally, I'd like to invite all of you to join us at the Highlands Ranch Fourth of July Parade, an event on the Fourth of July. It will be on Highlands Ranch Parkway in front of Town Center, because nothing's going to stop Highlands Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Well said. So with that, we are going to reset. Commissioner Teal, yes, please.
Apologies. Just a quick comment. First of all, I do want to commend my colleague, Commissioner Thomas, for her dedication to her neighborhood over this weekend. I don't, I mean, I'm sure we have some people in the county who have been working harder than she has this weekend, but honestly, I can't think of who that might be right now. So obviously, her service to her neighbors has been more than admirable. On a far more mundane and probably boring note, I did want to share the good news from one of my assignments these last two years as representing the county on the E470 Board. And the state, in the toll roads that they control, will be raising rates next month, some considerably, some as much as 20%. We did make the decision in this past month on the E470 Board to keep rates, toll rates frozen, to not raise any rates. It is a challenging environment on the E470 financial management side, but at the same token, we wanted to keep faith in this inflationary time with all the people who do drive on E470 and rely on it to get around, maybe just get to the airport, and rates will remain frozen until further notice.
Commissioner Teal, thank you for that additional comment. Well appreciated. So with that, we are going to give the room an opportunity to reset for the Woodmore Mountain General Improvement District Public Hearing. IT and the clerk's office will work on that. We'll reconvene in about five minutes. And the next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, July 11th, 2023, at 1:30 PM. We are adjourned.